...orders.
Terry, we do honor and praise in this place, please. Please stand up.
Well, Doug, Lloyd, in prayer. Lord Father, we thank you for all your blessings. We pray, Lord Father, you'll bless our community and our leaders. I pray we're all be led by the Spirit of God on decisions we make, Lord Father, for the community. I pray that you bless, Lord Father, all the citizens, dear God, that we do what you have us to do. I pray, Lord Father, that you remember the lost that be saved and all the sick and those has cancer, all these sick and diseases that you've touched their body, those in nursing homes and hospitals, and we'll give you the honor, praise, and glory in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellinger.
Here.
Mr. Fannin.
Here.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
I number four. You got a copy of the minutes from your September 2013 meeting? What's the plan, the council?
Little approved, Mr. Harry.
Second.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
You had your report from your board, your leisure department. It's but your pleasure.
Little approved. You look at that.
A second.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
I number six, any comments or assistance? You know what you've been doing?
Yes, sorry. I didn't realize I was first.
Go ahead, Michelle. Let me see if I can handle that.
Okay. I'm Celeste Sharp, and I would like to give every council member a letter. And actually, for you, Mayor Stanfield, here's the original. If you don't mind my reading it.
Sure.
Okay. "We would like to collectively let the city of LaFollette and its council members know that we support the current administration's efforts in pursuing the cleanup and restoration of the city. Many of the current issues will take time to resolve, but it is our belief that it will be a worthwhile investment. We appreciate the city and its administrators, and its administrator, Billy Russell, in their efforts to spearhead these changes. The restoration of downtown with continuous improvements will have a measurable impact on the city, its businesses, and residents. We are revitalizing the LaFollette Merchants Association with our charter goal being to provide an environment where businesses can thrive, prosper, and hear people say, 'Let's go downtown.'" And we are excited, and for the last, what, 24 hours, we collected 130 signatures to show our support from people who live, work in the LaFollette or Campbell County area. So we just want to say thank you for taking to the initiative.
And I promise you, it's not over. I promise you that.
We want it to continue.
It's a good start.
So we're excited.
It's a good start.
So let's go downtown!
Okay, any announcements, Mr. Council? Okay. We're still up for Nashville, right? Everybody? Andrew? Nashville trip's on, right?
Huh?
Nashville trip's still on for you, right?
As far as I know.
Okay, good, okay. Okay, and administration, number one, approve the estimates for duck work. We've not got any estimates.
I don't know what those estimates are, but we need to add to that the $600 fee that it's going to cost for the, do the extra drainage on the downspouts. Whatever that estimate is, we need that $600. Is that right?
Yes.
$600?
There were $600 due to that. Who? Let me ask you a question on that, Joe. Who has got the contract on that job?
Which job?
Who?
What job?
On this duck work.
On the duck work?
Huh?
I don't know.
Have you laid it out yet? Are you going to lay it out? Or you're going to bid it? Or you're just going to give it to whoever you walk to? How you going to do it?
That sales of the approved estimates. I don't know. I haven't seen any estimates.
What, you're going to vote to pay for it and haven't seen them? You don't know what the price is? Is that why you're there?
I don't know. I don't know what the estimates are. I don't know where they come from. I don't know if we have any or not.
So we're going to put, we're going to put the solar tires up without asking what the price of it is or anything else before we ever take the bid?
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't make this agenda. I was told that we needed $600 added to whatever these estimates were.
Now, I know, but now anybody could ask you for $600. Do you just come out the wall and say, "Yeah, here it is"? That's what you're doing?
No.
I mean, I want to know more about it. I know I said I'm for it or against it, but I want to know more about it. I don't know what you're going to do with it.
The $600 that I was adding to it has nothing to do with the duck work, Mr. Hatmaker.
What's it got to do with?
It has to do with the downspouts and the drains that we talked about in the workshop, that Mr. Mullins and them was going to fix the drains to get the water away from the building.
Where did you find that at?
Find what?
The downspouts. I'm seeing on the agenda here no word.
No, it wasn't put on there, but it was discussed in the workshop.
Yeah, discussed, but you're talking about duck work repair now. We're not talking about downspouts. You're hearing on the agenda, it says approve the estimate for the duck work we have. Now, we switched over from the duck work and went to downspouts. I just want to know where you're at.
No, I didn't switch over. I said we needed $600 added to it.
Well, then you should have added that down there at the bottom of where it said to.
Well, we'll put it in where you want it.
It's not where I want it. It's where that it calls for in the agenda.
All right.
That's what's wrong with us now. We never follow the agenda, and we never do nothing according to the rules and regulations.
All right.
And I just want it, you know, to, if you want to bring it up, that's fine. No big deal. But let's put it in order where it needs to go.
Well, where do you want it?
You don't want it right now. You can put it where it's supposed to be put.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Huh?
Do you know what it's going to cost to do the duck work?
No, do you?
No.
Where'd you come up with $600 at then?
Me?
Anybody.
Mr. Mullins come up with it, and Mr. Byrd, to fix the drains from the gutter.
Well, who did he tell about?
We discussed it, remember, at workshop?
Yeah, we discussed it, but we didn't have no price on it.
No, they just told me if they had to go, when I walked up here, that we needed $600 to do that work.
Gary mentioned the $600 in the workshop, though, not now.
Explain to him one more time, Gary, would you care?
The workshop, but Gary mentioned the $600.
Go over one more time with him, okay?
I'm sorry, I don't need arguing with anybody, but it was brought up.
We think we did both of the duck work and the downspouts for about $1,200. About $600 for each one of them. It may not cost that much, but we need about $600 for the pipelines and the downspouts, and probably $600 to fix the duck work in two offices.
So when we talked about all, we get the water working in the building.
Right.
At the workshop, we was talking about approximately $600, and we want $1,200 instead of $600.
To do the duck work, to duck work, need to be done, because Billy's office is hot.
So the duck work is in this price?
No. We need $1,200 probably to do both of them.
Okay. Are you going to do the work, Jim?
The downspouts, Gary and I together, if our department public works together, we'll do the downspouts. And the duck work, I'm not, we're going to work, we won't.
Well, I guess I might do duck work.
Somebody else. I don't have a sheet metal man to do the duck work, insulation man. So we'll have to get somebody else to do the duck work. All I'm involved in, Gary and I together, if our department fleet and public works are involved in the downspouts, getting the water away from the building, that was $600 estimate.
That's on the downspouts?
Right.
Okay, now, I understand that very well. But where's the duck work at?
We're not, we've not got an estimate yet. I just, we just.
Where is the duck work that you're going to replace? Or you're going to do something other way that you want the money to do it with?
We're going to put it in the city minister's office and an office adjacent to her office. We're going to put it in two offices.
Two places?
Right.
What are you going to do, Gary? Tie it into the old existing duck work?
Yes. They put the ceiling below the regional duck work, the vents, and it's blown out the ceiling instead of the room.
Okay, so, but at this moment in time, according to the, to the minister, ministeration here, we need to talk about the duck work and not the outside downspout. That's what it says. It doesn't confuse nobody if you're stick with your agenda.
Okay, we need $600 in to do the duck work.
I don't have a problem with that. I know where it's going now.
Fellas, are you sure that that approved estimates for duck work is not that, the two estimates we have? Really, give us some clarification on that. Is that, is this in our packet because these are the two things?
Two things.
I understand you give it in the packet. This is just based on what we remember last week.
So we have it in our packet, but we're not, we're not moving on it?
No.
I don't think, I don't think we have enough information to do that.
Yeah, this is through your face. Stand.
Do both of it at the same time.
What you do?
We're within limits of $600 of something we can do on a day project. If you didn't vote on it, I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and approve to do the downspouts and the duck work. I make a motion to go ahead and do that, not to exceed $1,200.
Have a motion, Bob, to have a second.
Yes.
Have a second, Mr. Harry.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Wait a minute. We still, Bob is completely out of proportion here again. Now, you can't put both together. You absolutely, it's not even on, what I'm trying to tell you, this is what's confusing everybody. It's not on the agenda, the downspouts not. Now, if you want to do that separate, I'll vote for it. But you're going to put them together? Absolutely not.
Okay, I want to, I have to, you take your second, Zach.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve $600 for the duck work, not to exceed $600.
And I second that motion.
Okay, Angie, we talk a little bit.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and do $600 for the downspouts that we talked about also in the workshop.
Have a motion, Bob, to have a second.
Yes.
Have a second, Mr. Harry.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes. Now, we got to strike. Look, Mr. Harry. Attorney, Police Department, I number one, approve auction for seized and unused and off of city vehicles. Jimmy, you got a list made? We want the list.
We have a list.
You have a list?
That we'll get to the auctioneer as soon as you let us know a date that we'll be able to do that. We may also have some other items too to sell.
So we're good to go when you're ready, right? Have you set time for the auction, Jimmy, or?
No, I think the last time you all set the date.
What was it made of?
I mean, the last auction we had.
Okay.
How long would it take you to get a date, Jim? We have 18 vehicles that are ready. We've sent out, I don't know how long the abandoned vehicles, we have like six of those, I think. I don't know how long it'll take to get that, get those back, but if we don't sell those in this sale, we can sell those in the next sale, the abandoned vehicles. So we've got 18 that are, that are ready to sell today, right now.
So we have a motion to approve the auction.
Where you want to set the date and put that in the motion?
Good. Okay. Let me say this, Joe. Jimmy, now, there's a deadline to when Mr. Mullins can get this parking lot paved or sealed. Now, did you and Jim get together and work a day out or a time out back here so that these cars won't be back here when they come to seal the black, the black, the back parking lot?
No, yeah.
If you all want to set a sale date, Jimmy and I will work together and make it work.
Okay, now, Jim?
If we need to move.
I expect that to happen. I don't want, now, let's end up coming up here, the people coming out here to do it, and then we end up spending half what we get out of the cars, moving the cars to another location so that you can get your, your parking lot paved.
When they call me with a date to take and seal, if it is before the sale date, Jimmy and I will work together and get these vehicles moved so they can, so it don't hold up the sealing. But bearing that in mind, the sooner the sale, the less likely it is to be a conflict. Is that what I'm saying?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we set a date of Saturday, October the 12th, to sell the surplus vehicles and other items that are ready to sell.
October 12th? Could you have a second? Is that satisfactory with you on that?
No, I need to check the dates as the first I've heard of them.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Call, Mr. George.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Under Public Works, approve recycling, Greg. Can you on top of that a little bit?
This is an opportunity to give, to apply for a grant to pay, it's either 70 or 80 percent of the money that goes on the truck to pick up recycling, which will greatly help our recycling program. We have to pay our share plus buy the truck to put it on. So we're looking at our part, cost share plus the truck, $37,000, $38,000. Now, by the time we apply for the grant, go through the red tape, jump through the hoops and all that, it'll be next summer before we have to come up with our money. So, but if we don't vote on it now to apply for it, or not apply for it, whatever you all want to do. But then it will be this time next year before we have the opportunity to apply again. But I need to know if you do or not, want to apply for the grant, so I can let the people know that do that and get the thing rolling or forget it, either one, whatever you all want to do.
Remind us how much that was, please. $37,000.
$37,000, somewhere in there.
I make a motion that we give Mr. Mullins the authorization to go ahead and apply for the grant on the recycling truck. Have a motion, Mr. Harry, have a second. Have a second, Bob, call her.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Look, Mr. Harry, I number four, Department.
Approve. Under Public Works, I know we asked Mr. Mullins, I think, at workshop, we got the paving. Have you heard any more from him?
They told me last Friday they would be here this week to start the milling where it needs to be milled, and the dig out areas that have to be dug out and put back for a base all the way up. They plan on doing that this week. Then, no later than week after next, do, complete the paving. We did get the guardrail up last week. The guardrails complete, that phase of it.
Jim, everything about the paving, Charles Woods back around the back, he's coming for us about three or four times for the pasture about history of our own West Walden. We want to try to do it?
I don't have money. I can't use this grant money because it is designated walk streets, you know, that we can use it on, and West Walden is not one of them. We can only use this federally funded T-Dot money on the streets that they designate, and West Walden is not one of those streets.
I know it. Can you get with Kelly, get Kelly to give us a price, what it would cost to black top in front of Woods's house? And bring it up for us?
I'll get it for hours.
While Rogers group's here, just not going to talk for a while? Might as well let them do it while they're here.
Well, I don't have the money in my budget, but I'll get you a price.
We may not have it, but we may even be able to find some money, something like that. He's been here 12 years complaining about it.
It does leave a leaving, I'll agree.
Will you let me?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you. If you remember, Jim, I asked you guys to put another half a million dollars in, into the budget, and we got it. I'm not for taking these people's tax money and putting it in the bank and not giving them service. I'm not for that. We've got the money in the bank to do it, and we can go into West LaFollette, that ain't the only street in West LaFollette that needs to be paved. There's several of them over there that need to be paved. The thing we need to do is give these people their money back in blacktop for their taxes. And I asked yous to put in a half a million dollars to do that, and, and you all act like it was, you know, you wanted to keep the money in the bank.
I definitely.
Now, I said you all, I didn't say, I didn't call no names. But we need to go in there at West LaFollette, we need to appropriate another half a million dollars and go ahead while, they said they could probably get to it, didn't they, Jim? While they was here?
It's too late now.
Well, we wait back then.
One or two streets, one or two streets. Well, let me, let me change that. Depending on the weather, if you appropriate the money now, and I give them notification in the morning, they will make every effort to pave every street they can depending on the weather.
I understand that, Jim, and, and I begged you for the last three months. I said, "Jim, stay on top of those blacktop people." And I said, "And try to get them in here before July while everything is good and hot," and I said, "You can get a good blacktop job." I said, "And Jim, you was raised in blacktop. You know how it is. If you wait till cold weather, it just chips up on you."
We did not get the, the money approved, and I don't remember the date, but as soon as we got the go-ahead, we went ahead and bid the project. As soon as it went back through T-Dot, and they gave us the go-ahead to award the project, we did. I have those dates, so I don't have with me.
Okay, what did your man tell me from Rogers group down there when we met with him? What did he look me in eye and tell me? I said, "Keep Jim out of trouble, go up there and get our blacktop and done," and I said, "Before cold weather sets in."
Right.
And he said, "Sir," he said, "I'll do that." Now, here we are, and, and starting in, in October, and still no blacktop. What are you going to do if it turns off cold weather now?
What did I told him? I've done all I can do. I don't mean to defend myself. Maybe I'm not, or maybe I should have. Well, I ain't going there.
Well, I understand that, Jim, and I'm with you. But what can we do to get the service that we need to get from these people?
I can't control our schedule, and I know that's not what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But, you know, when we beg them, when we give them the work, they know we got the money to back up what we say. You know, that's all we can do.
Jim?
Yes.
Remember a few years back, we pushed you to get in here and start blacktop in some of these streets and bad weather?
Yes.
Okay, those streets come back up, do you?
Some of them did, yeah.
Okay, that's just wasting taxpayers' dollars. It's just going to be good money after bad.
They came back and redid some of their fence now. But we don't want that out there.
No, but the ones that did come back and redo, they're shot now.
Right.
But we did push you, and that's our fault.
And I pushed that.
I know you did, and, and, yeah. I understand. I've filled enough blacktop in 37 years, no half works. I would still like to see us put another half a million dollars for blacktop and, and take your West LaFollette. You want to be done this winter? You want to be done this winter? Well, it's like Jim says, it depends on the weather. On the weather, yeah. If you, if you have good weather, that's reasonable, why, if we may not do it this year, Mike, but if you approve the money and the weather's good, then you can do it. If you don't approve the money and the weather's still good, you can't, you ain't got time to come in here and, and then wait another month to okay it, get the money appropriated and everything else. We may not use it, but if we appropriate the money for it and it's good weather, we can.
I think that's what we discussed before.
It is, it is.
I think that's where the confusing came in about, where I got confused about the blacktop for the parking lot and, and this, because I thought it was going to be confined in one, and that it would be appropriated. So I think that, I think that we did say that's what we were going to do. So it's appropriated, whether we spend it, you know, if the, if the conditions are right, then that we would have the money allocated, right? Is that right, Mr. Mullins?
Yeah, well, I understand it if I remember Mr. Swift telling, you correct me if I'm wrong, Gary. The money is in the bank. If we draw it out now, we pay a penalty on it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we draw it out and use it now, we pay a penalty on it. Now, if you won't pay the penalty, that, you know, that's up to you all.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
You know what the penalty is?
No.
You're talking, in other words, we're talking about a penalty and you don't know what, and you don't know what it is?
No.
You're talking about .25. .25 now. That, that, that's nothing.
.5, you know.
.25 is nothing, and we've got a note, three something, and we can not even pay it off, and, and they're drawing .25, and got a 3.5 note that we can pay off and, and save the, that kind of money. But we don't want to do that. I know, I understand that, but.
You know, what if you all want to do? If you want, if you want to approve the money, I'll make a phone call right now and tell him to get on the ball, you know, add it on and.
Well, I'm like Billy, you know, I think, I think the money ought to be appropriated, and then if the weather permits, you can go with it. And if it don't, we don't go none of it.
Right.
We'll save the other $400,000 until next year.
Whatever you all want to do.
Jim, didn't we also say we're willing to give you hospital money? Or was that brought up? Let's see if we can get you hospital money.
That was discussed. But, well. Whatever you all want to do.
Can we not have a contingency that we're either going to take it out of, we're going to appropriate it, and that we're either going to take it out of the hospital funds or the other? I mean, can we not just, depending upon the circumstances that are appropriate?
Absolutely.
I don't know if that's...
What hospitals? What hospital funds?
The ones that you're talking about that you just asked?
They ain't gonna happen, we was talking about that, that swap down on Vinny Willer.
Okay, so then there's not gonna be...
There ain't gonna be none. Your what? There ain't gonna be no hospital money. The hospital ain't gonna go along swapping that money on Vinny Willer.
Right.
Yes, there will be some hospital money. There'll be three hundred and some thousand hospital money. We can't use that money, can we, Terry? Yes, you can.
No, you can't.
No, I ain't talking about the money down here now. I'm talking about what they owe us up here now. Right, you can't use that. The rent, the, the...
No, that's in escrow, that's in escrow.
It goes to escrow accounts. If they don't build hospitals, it's turned, it works back to us, but they've got until the end of the lease term to do it.
That's six years.
Exactly.
Is that what you meant, Terry?
The, the three hundred thousand we have now, we'll do another three hundred thousand dollars this month. But all that goes in escrow until the lease, until they build a hospital or the lease, uh, it matures.
Okay, okay.
It's in escrow.
We might be able to, but it's not...
So what, I'm sorry, so what did you do about the hospital?
I thought it was gonna get made from hospitals.
Six hundred different issues.
Uh, now, Terry, did you tell me that you was gonna put that in a CD?
It goes in a CD in escrow. The three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you've already got three hundred thousand in CD, and then we'll give another three hundred thousand, and it will go in the same, same place.
Let's move on. And for our number one, approve warrant brand new, grows as a full-time firefighter with benefits effective day ten, fifth, thirteenth. Starting salary twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, twenty-three cents. Gary, is Brandon here? Gary, you approve this?
Yes, I'm for the motion.
The motion was drawn, have a second.
Yes.
Have a second, call bro.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
What's your... Looking forward, Brandon. Okay, and the orders and resolutions, number one, resolutions twenty thirteen dash zero seven. Resolutions to the meeting original twenty thirteen dash twenty fourteen, this for your budget. And have a copy of that for the players and council. We approve it. Second, have a twenty-second, call bro.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Be in no further business, as means a journal.
Major. Before you do...
Stand, oh, I'm sorry, Stan. Raise your hands, Stan. Go ahead, go ahead.
As you all know, we've got a business one to locate at the old Claiborne Oaks. And we, what we've got here, we've got... What we've got, we've run into a situation here to where we're trying to work, work everything out with this potential business one to build here. What we've run into is parking spacing, and myself and the administrator, Ms. Russell, we had met with the business owner there beside the old Cadillac dealership. And we've come up with a plan for that area of what we can do to get this business space. And what we're proposing is...
For this transaction?
In the rear of the, in the rear of the building, the city designated parking. They park there for years, but we were, we're asking that designate parking in the rear and abandon, right beside of the building, there's an unopened street. Abandon that unopened street and put parking in there. And on the side, there is a retaining wall that we had an issue with with the bank sliding. Going in there and repairing that retaining wall and putting it back to the property. And I don't know if y'all have seen this drawing, but this is one that we've done some sketching on. I'll take it around each one of y'all. It shows the parks, and also shows the retaining wall here, and it would show your, your exit code.
Stan? Yeah, I see. Okay, now, part of the building there on that unopened street, it's already blacktop. All we gotta do is just put the parking lines there.
Well, if you're going there, it's gonna have to be, there's gonna have to be some paving done to it, because I guess where a trash truck or something's come in there, it's gipped it out, it's, it's pretty bad shape.
Is the dumpster behind the building?
No, there's one dumpster. There may have been once before, a big truck or something.
There had been some parts across the street. No, I tried, that's not...
That, uh, unopened street span, uh, that unopened street that you're talking about is hip wide enough for parking?
Once we see it, once it's filled, yes.
Okay, Stan, if, if we approve this right here, the business will be coming in here. You need this in the motion.
I need it in the motion. We've got one more step. I mean, this is the city's part, the city's probably done. We have one, we have one other which is not our responsibility, and it'll be, it'll be a complete...
Bob, you okay with...
Yeah, we, we talked to the Claiberns, Bill and I have talked to the Claiberns all week, and we're almost there, okay?
You know, they... If you and the Claiberns agree with it, Jim...
Well, I mean, we, we still have to come to an understanding. But, uh, I mean, it's taken twenty, thirty-two, forty spots for us that we now park on, that we lease, that, uh, we take McDonald's needs. And if, as all of us get together, we can, we can fix it. The Claiberns, they have to all come to one more agreement, and we're okay with that.
Okay. And Jim, as far as this retaining wall stuff, we can handle that as far as moving it, setting it, stuff?
It depends on where the property line is. Now, if the property line is way high on that bank, now, we can do it. But it depends on how expensive, it depends on how expensive it gets and how detailed it is. Uh, the one on the other side next to the, where the, excuse me, where it's an open street, in order to get parking in there, we have to put a retaining wall in there, fill that in in order to have enough area. We might locate it with another day. Now, on the eleventh street side, uh, if it goes way up on that bank, you're gonna get deep enough to get to the bottom where it will be serious. So, first thing we need to do is get, uh, the surveyor to shoot the property lines, so we know exactly where they are. Then, we can better talk about what's involved. Right now, it'd just be a complete shot. I, I have no idea till I find out where the property line is and what it's gonna involve, the one on the eleventh street side.
You all made a motion on this?
Yes.
What, I mean, go ahead.
Well, and what we had talked about, if I'm not mistaken, as part of the planning commission meeting the other night, was, um, you know, as part of downtown revitalization, and it's, I don't see it posted on the agenda, um, that we were going to, um, as part of that, start the process with Mr. McGill and McGill Engineering. We're gonna bring that before, uh, council to talk about, um, forming a focus group that with representatives from various sectors, where, um, there would be a series of meetings. We would meet, Mr. McGill would facilitate the meetings. They would, within a six-month period of time, they would meet regularly, and they would come up with a proposal of what they think we should do downtown. That way, it's not us deciding what, um, the people should do. It, it's, it's the people, it's the people who's in business. And, um, that and, um, this, this issue with, you know, with, um, with this business, um, that was all, that's kind of all, we looked at all together, uh, 'cause we want to, if it's okay with the council, proceed to be able to form that committee and to look for members of that committee, is that right, Joe? Is that to your remembrance?
Yeah, I, I don't recall it specifically having anything to do with this particular project, but yes, you're right, it's, uh, we did discuss it, and yes, I'm for establishing that group.
I thought we, uh, we talked about kind of, that would be kind of considered part of downtown revitalization. And if it's the, the business that we're thinking, you know, maybe downtown starts right there, so I'm not sure. But that will be for the, the focus group, uh, to determine, but, um...
So you're wanting to put these folks on hold until a focus group's formed, is that what you're saying?
No.
Uh-uh. Let's go ahead and do this.
Go ahead and do, and then start the group.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and do that, but also as part of downtown revitalization separately.
So...
Yes.
So you want us also to approve, to go ahead and form this focus group tonight also?
Yes, and, um, I actually had, um, I don't know if Gil here is here tonight, but I had, I had stopped and spoke with her, um, the other morning, 'cause she's always got some great ideas. But it wasn't, um, you know, nothing's in place. And I, I guess that we would, um, Gary, what do you suggest has been the precedent in the past with other communities? Now, Gary has experienced with the Main Street Grant. Um, he's worked with other, other, um, towns to, um, create a plan. And, and not just a plan, but one that is executable and is measurable, and that's divided into phases, so that we can say, okay, we're successful when we've met this, you know, and, and this is the phases that we, that we feel like it should be. Um, is that, and, you know, is that something that you generally just ask for volunteers from the, from the city? Or people are interested, get a list of names, and then do it that way, you know? Decide to make sure we got all sectors covered, or what do you suggest?
Are you asking, are you asking me a question?
Ms. Russell, she introduced another thing.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, yes, this is Mr. Gary McGill. He is with McGill Engineering, and he's worked with the City of LeFollet for a long time, I believe, uh, on various projects. And Mr. Gill, um, and, um, there's a series of meetings where Mr. Gill met with the mayor, Jonah, and, um, myself, just briefly. And then Mr. Bill came up, and we went and kind of drove around the town and, and to try to identify our assets, which a lot of us know what those are already, but it's nice to hear an outsider's point of view. And, um, he also came and met with us at the, at the planning commission. So, you know, uh, he can facilitate the group and make sure we stay on task, that it moves forward, um, so it doesn't drag out. And, you know, I'm, I'm excited about a lot of the things that we've done downtown. It's awesome, we've got a lot of good feedback, uh, literally feedback with cakes that we've got from, that we've got from, uh, somebody, I don't even know who brought that cake. We don't even know who brought that cake, do we? But thank you whoever it was. Um, all the notes, all of the positive feedback reinforcement. I mean, it, it's, it's been so encouraging to see the town and the merchants and, you know, everybody coming together and coming back to life again. You know, this is our town, and it's just our time to take it back. We have to take it back from the crime that's, that's been going on down here. We have to clean it up. You know, if we don't take pride in our own community, then why should anyone else make the investment to, you know, to come down here? So, um, with that, I'll just turn it over to Mr. McGill.
Well, as it relates to the downtown revitalization that, that we've had some conversation about, the, uh, the, the process, we've talked more about the process than anything else. Certainly, LeFollet, uh, is, is, has got a core downtown that, that can go through this process. I think it'd be very successful, but not to get into a lot of details necessarily unless, unless you want to ask me questions. The process that we've always followed for all the successful revitalization of downtown is to, is to, of course, involve, obviously involve city council, involve the planning commission, but to form a core group of people that we call stakeholders, basically. Uh, and it can be, it can be some of you all, it can be people who own property downtown, the people, merchants that are downtown. It can be other citizens, uh, and, and we've identified, identified the categories that these folks would come from to appoint this core group or focus group or whatever you want to call it. Uh, that would be basically the group that would, um, that would go through the planning process. Uh, everybody can input to this group, what they feel, they can bring it to the meetings. But the way we don't do it is to have a series of meetings. Uh, it, it shouldn't take very long, a long time to do it, only because the momentum is lost if, if it takes a long time. The way we've always done it to be successful is have this core group meet every month. Uh, my job is really to facilitate the meeting, not to necessarily tell anybody what the revitalization of downtown should look like, but to bring up our experience in the successful downtowns, what works, apply it to LeFollet, apply it to the assets that LeFollet has in downtown. And this group, over a six-month period, and six-month plus or minus, depending on how hard everybody works, to develop a plan for revitalization. And the plan includes, uh, everything. It includes all, all parts of downtown, the public properties, the private properties, the, the, the things that you would like to see downtown, what you would like to see. Uh, the assets, uh, improved to, uh, what type of other things you would have in downtown for forest, restaurants and shopping and other types of things to do, so it can be a destination. Uh, that process, uh, becomes your plan, and at that point, you have a plan to go forward to implement downtown revitalization. That's the process that we follow that, that works, uh, very well. But it involves stakeholders, it involves elected officials. My job is more to facilitate it, to keep it moving, to be sure that, that it, uh, costs are identified, improvements are identified in whatever is brought up in the core group. And it becomes the document that then takes you to the, to the actual implementation of what, what you would like to do and how you would pay for it. And when you have that, then you can move forward with the downtown at whatever speed you want to move.
And, and I might add also, there's a Main Street Grant, a downtown grant. Usually, you apply for the downtown grant first and then the Main Street Grant. And those calls are coming up, um, in early spring. So if we can get moving and come up with a concept, then we can go ahead and apply for those grants to help us get this done if, if the council so, so moves. And, um, we, I also was contacted by Todd Morgan, who's with the State of Tennessee Main Street Grant Program, and he provided me with the name of a volunteer that has, um, he's an intern, and he has worked on these projects in various other places. And he would be willing, if we, if we can get him, and someone doesn't snack too much before us, to do a lot of this work with us, for us, and, and to also give us this additional hands if we need those.
I feel the process that, that you all, this, this board has before you, uh, we, we actually talked about this at the planning commission meeting, uh, to, to let the planning commission hear, hear our, our discussion about it, and to, uh, to get the approval, basically, of planning commission, that, that to follow this process and to move forward with it. Uh, of course, we would like, we would like this body to also approve moving forward with it at this point, so that we can, the, the, but, but the process after this with, with the approvals is to form a core group, identify those people, get their buy-in to, to serve, uh, in the, in the planning process. And, and all the time we're going through the planning process, we're looking for the funds that would be available to, to move forward with the implementation. But that's what really, I believe, is before you now, is to, to give your heads up, I guess, to this, and, and let the process proceed. And of course, you all would be kept at the wrist of everything that was going on anyway. But, uh, you really don't want to start down the process of forming the group and everything unless this board has, has, uh, approved the process to proceed in that way. Then everybody feels like we're moving with confidence, and we can, we can take it from there and move forward.
Gary, we probably need to, to, to act on this tonight, probably, this meeting.
If you're ready to do that, in the center of the better to, so it can move forward, but I don't feel like it should until this body says that it's okay to start this process.
Let's, let's go ahead. And this favor, we can...
If I might, I'm gonna interfere a little bit in what you were discussing in the middle of this. Uh, as, as it relates to this business that's been brought up, uh, yes, it's related to downtown, but, but any action related to this really doesn't affect what I'm talking about.
Let, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and act on this business. I can come in here and, and we'll go back to Gary. Stan, you want to comment more about the business? I think everybody knows what it is.
You all do, you all just need to, to, to let us move forward on it.
Okay, what I'd like to do is make a motion on this. Uh, and, and if you guys want to put your input in on my motion, you're welcome, Terry, I'd like for you to. But what I'd like to do is give the authorization to, which I already got it, to Mr. Claiborne and Mr. Fannin to go ahead and work their deal out, whatever it may be. And we will support their decision. And we will also put our part in on what we own, for them to make a parking lot out of. And then that way, they can go ahead and get this business and get it started, and we'll have a, uh, everybody won't try to keep it a secret, but we'll have another McDonald's in town.
Okay, no secret now.
And, uh, so, uh, it, did, did anything else?
Well, I, uh, I don't know, uh, do we need to, do we need to close that, uh, street? Abandon that street in this moment?
It is already an unopened street. I mean, Reed?
You will need to probably reclassify that, because it is a, I don't know if you need to abandon it. We, we, you'll need to reclassify that. And we'll also need, as part of your motion, to hire a surveyor to ascertain lines, because we don't want to go over. So we hope we make that part of your motion, too.
Yeah, to do that and, and to survey it on tip.
But I think if part of it will have to be abandoned as it pertains to a right-of-way, because it's not gonna be a right-of-way anymore. So we're gonna throw that into abandoned as, as whatever, whatever aspect of that is gonna be, you know, taken out and it's been abandoned.
Is that okay?
Yes, I think we should do what we need to do on that area.
And then that way, uh, I'm, I'm trying to do this in a way to speed it up as fast as we can, put everybody to work on it. And then that way, uh, uh, it'll get done, and, and it won't linger here for another two or three months, and, uh...
So that'll be two restaurants that we're getting, um, and that's, that's awesome.
In the rear of that building, Reed, do we need to, we need to state somewhere or do something? We are designating that rear area as parking. That way, in the future, I mean, you, you, you see what I'm saying?
Are we gonna maintain ownership of it, though?
Yes.
Well, we're gonna maintain ownership, or we can do whatever we want.
We need to stay to abandon it as a right-of-way and dedicate it as a parking area.
Correct.
Stan? If, if we have to give it to them, let's give it to them. We ain't doing nothing with it.
I mean, it's a, it's a small price to pay to get what you're gonna get.
If that'll bring something in, uh... Let me come in here real quick. Stan? And then you could time frame once we approve this tonight, when you start.
Once we get this other, once Mr. Fannin and Mr. Claiborne works this deal out.
Oh, really, good for them.
Well, as a right second, no.
I could just go right there.
I think that's, we have, Mr. about time, so, yeah.
Attention, your motion. I, I, I made a motion, it's that long, but I made, we got...
And, and I second that long.
Okay. Go ahead, call bro. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Because of the conflict, I'm, I'm gonna have to, no, I don't want to do this one, too.
We don't need it, go ahead.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Motion, Terry, is Jim?
After the vote, there's one other thing I want to...
After the vote, there's one other thing I want to bring up.
Motion carries, Jim?
Yes, I'll make it.
Well, we've got to go on back, before that, we've got to go back to Mr. McGill.
Yeah. You want to wait after Gary? Do you, do you something, do you ask Gary on something or?
No.
We have to make the motion.
It's totally different.
Oh, okay, okay.
It was discussed.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we move forward with the focus group, the downtown revitalization as Mr. McGill has laid it out and give the city administrator the authority to move forward with it.
Joe, if I wouldn't have made it, I second.
I second.
It's a mob, do it. Go ahead, Callahan, please.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fannin?
Yes.
Mr. Hightmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, Jim, I'm listening.
I forgot, this was discussed in workshop. I forgot to ask Joey to put it on the agenda. The skate park was discussed. I need to take it up to seal the parking lot. What do you want me to do with it? I want you all to tell me. I want, you want me to put it back or store it or whatever y'all, but I need to know what you all want done with it.
Are you talking about building those concrete barricades?
Yeah, we need to move on that.
Barricades, near fine. They can't, they can't seal that parking lot around it?
Well, they can, they can seal the parking lot, but is that skate park going to stay there from now on? Or do we need to go ahead and seal that area? If you don't keep the state, the skate park, that's fine. But we need to seal it and then put it back or, you know, there was two or three discussions and nobody decided what to do with it.
Maybe we should ask some of our merchants.
I just want you all to vote and tell me what to do with it after sealing it's done.
As we did, I'm sorry, as we did go around and we got 130 signatures, I did take a poll and everyone on that list voting to have it relocated to the place of your choice. And you can look at all the signatures and, and go talk to them. We have copies. But most of everyone I talked to asked that it be relocated.
What's wanted relocated to, Gil, was up around the rec center. Johnny's got enough problems up around that center now.
Well, that's what we're paying Johnny for, is have problems. And let's move, let's move the thing where it needs to be moved up here at the rec center, left-hand side there, put up a fence. You've got a good place. And because they need this place back here anyway. They can make money with it. And the only thing, we've got about four people, but I'm, I'm still for putting them a place to use that. But that's the wrong place for it. It's absolutely the wrong place for it.
And with all due respect, no, Johnny, yeah, I recommend, I recommend that we move it.
You're talking about across the new library, has it on the corner?
I'm sorry, Johnny, just, just a second.
We'll make that decision. Let's just get it moved. And we'll make that decision later. We've got all kinds of time if we get, got it moved or to put it.
We would rather Johnny have that issue than the downtown merchants. And I'm sorry, that's just what I feel. Because I know you will adapt and you'll get it taken care of.
Yeah, we'll take care of it. We'll put it on top of the building, yeah. One thing you might want to consider on that skate park is it's out of warranty and it's in bad shape. And it's going to also, if we move it, you're going to have to upgrade it. And it's not cheap. So, I mean, that's one thing you might want to consider because...
Where did the funding for that skate park come from?
I have no idea. I just, before my time.
Do we have a certain amount of time? Do we have to leave it in place or it has that time passed and we're ready?
The warranty's out on it, so...
Okay. But as far as the grant?
I don't think we received a grant.
I think we bought it. I think we purchased it with capital, I think.
Yeah, it was took, it was took out.
I'm not sure. I believe that's what it was. It's about, I guess about forty-some thousand, maybe.
Bob, you want to come in? Hey, we went over there the night after, after the workshop and there were several adults over there, what's your children, it's six or seven, eight children. I mean, we need a skate park. I just don't, if Johnny's saying if we move it, we may have to get a new skate park. I don't exactly know where you're saying to put it, in that grassy area right there across from the library?
That's the reason why I said, let's move it and then we'll all get together, go up there and look at it. And then there won't be no questions that way.
Well, why don't we, we've had it here that long, why don't we look into it a little bit further because we're getting two different, I mean, we're not going to seal it this month or we're not going to seal this by the end of the, by the end of the month.
I'm expecting a call any day.
Yeah.
So can we go?
That's the reason why I'm saying about the cars and the skate park.
I mean, it's going to be moved, but the determination...
Well, the way I'm hearing now, which we didn't hear the other night, Johnny said we move it, we're going to have to upgrade it, correct?
I don't think so. I mean, it's, it's a bad shape.
And we could destroy it by moving it.
It's, it wastes time. It's hard to move.
So it's out, if it's out of warranty, then what happens with that? Does that mean our liability goes up?
Well, that'd be up to your insurance, people, I don't know.
If you move it and we damage it, move it, it could back up so a kid gets hurt, we're liable for it.
Exactly.
Because over there, it's over there. There's no...
Why would we want it now? It is very unsafe because I see it every day, two, three times. It is, like Johnny said, it is unsafe and it will be unsafe.
But Gary, you've got to admit, there's a lot of kids use that thing. And like Bob said, we walked over after the workshop the other night and there was probably about seven or eight kids over there. They're coming from South Hills, Inverdale Village, and East. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
You know, they want it where they get to it by having to walk over.
Well, if you, my, my thinking is if you move it any further west, you probably need to have two skate parks, have one on the west end and one in the east end. Makes it more accessible for the kids.
I have an order to make a motion.
When? We're not to discuss this.
If you, if you, depending on if you move it or not, you have to have special bolts. Some, there's a special bolt for concrete and there's a special bolt for asphalt. And so wherever you move it, you have, I think you have to change the bolts. What about how and how much they cost? I believe that's right.
You?
If you don't agree for me not to seal where it is, I don't have a problem with it. But what I want to do, forget it out or whatever I do, if I leave it, then why didn't you move it? Or if I move it, why didn't you move it? I want you all to tell me what to do with it. Either leave it and not seal right where it is and seal it later when it's moved, or move it somewhere and put it back when you all agree where to put it.
I can see what the big deal is, not sealing it, it's sitting there in place. I mean, you take cardboard, they're going to spray it, that silver.
Yeah.
Not going to roll it or brush it, they're going to spray it. Like if it's cardboard holding up, is that stuff the kids play on, it's spraying me down with it.
If that's the wishes of the council, that's fine, we'll move it.
And that's crazy, when we move on the concrete.
And I have an order to make a motion. I'll help solve your problem.
Because you're in order to discuss it.
If I can get a second and, and the people are focused on it.
I like Joe's idea of putting one south, one east, one west. I see Mr. Schnodler not here. Is there a ring over there in, in that area where you're at? We could put a skateboard park on our property?
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
We would have to discuss that a little bit.
We should get it to the county at Lightbridge.
They don't want it. That's it. I mean, you know, I...
Let me say, on our end, it would be a great liability. I understand children use that quite frequently, but with our liability insurance, I think we would have a great problem there.
Do we have a park at Linden Park? Is there something that's that way that would be convenient for those kids? Hard to get to. I mean, I'm not saying that we should...
As long as it's, yeah.
The, the park. Well, maybe we should send it back to, oh, okay.
Steve, any comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Steve, you want to come in?
I'd like to make a motion that we move the skate park, put it somewhere until we can bring it up to date or get a new one or fix a place for it. And we'll all get together, go and look at this place up here and see if it's suitable. And if it is, we'll fix a place up there to put it. Then we'll let Johnny look at it.
So we'll be moving it so he can seal under it, is what you're saying?
C'est moi.
And we're going to move it so he, Mr. Mullins can, they can seal under it?
Not do that.
And not put it back?
Oh, no, I didn't say that. No, you're putting words in my mouth now.
I'm saying, is he going to seal, we're taking it up so we can seal under it?
We'll, we'll take, no, no. I don't want to do that because it's, it's dangerous the way it is. What I'm trying to say is, it's dangerous the way it is, it needs to be updated. Let's move it out till we can update it and, and find a place for it. And if we can't find a place for it, if we have to, we'll put it back.
But while it's up, I'm saying, he's going to, he's going to seal code under that, that asphalt while we've got it up. That was his main concern, is getting a yes to seal it or no to seal around it. So we're going to seal under, we're going to, we take it up to put it in storage or whatever. Mr. Mullins is going to make sure it gets sealed, the asphalt.
Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You probably got, what, you in a four-inch cap on top of the existing blacktop?
At least it's too high. I believe it's too high. But it's a pretty good cap.
As far, you're talking about kind of platform or foundation?
Yeah, with asphalt.
So that, so that might even be a good place for those, the bathroom, porta potties? I don't, the other consideration is that if we get the person up here from the state to look at doing something with, along that creek bank where we can cut some of that undergrowth out and we're still waiting, that's not beside, you know, they've not been here yet. But that would also, that could also be a factor if that skate park is still right there, you know? I think that, I just don't think it goes there.
I got a motion on the floor, Mayor.
Have a second.
I don't remember what it was.
What's the motion?
The motion is move the skate park before we put it back, repair it, bring it up to date or replace it. And put it wherever that we, that we've got room to put it. We may have to put it back over here, I don't know. But right now, let's get it out of there to where we go ahead and blacktop everything. I mean, seal everything.
Blacktop it.
No. Well, Jim, we've got to do a little blacktop and not enough to mount in that.
Yeah, daddy.
And, and, and we'll work this thing out. It ain't going to be difficult. We'll work it out some way. That's what we're here for, is to work.
We're going to store it. I'd like to know where we're going to store it. I'd like to know where we're going to store it.
Well, then Jim, worry about that.
Reed, just tell him, still, what part I want to know.
If I find somewhere to put it, we'll help you. We may have to come out your parking lot.
Okay, it's Andrew's motion. Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a second, Callahan.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fannin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hightmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's me, Mr. George.
Callahan. October 1st.
There's one other thing. Don't go into the, 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 well, read that. I would like to make a comment to the gentleman on downtown. Now, let's keep in mind, it's going to cost some money to do this. And, and, and we need to be looking, trying to find some money for these people. Because if we're going to expect the stuff out of them and all these people giving their time, all these people working hard, and we're planning to get this thing together to work it up, you know what it takes. It takes, it's just like the church. It takes money. So let's keep in mind and try to work in a way and keep in contact with our financial director back here to the point where that if they've got to have some money that we can find it for. I just wanted to make that comment. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to butt in, but I wanted...
Callahan, please.
Chairman Bellinger?
Here.
Mr. Fannin?
Here.
Ms. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Hightmaker?
Here.
Mayor St. Peter? Here. With a subpoena, no, no, it's received and no other confirmation discussed, motion carries.
Second.